So, we have to get the cards. We should have that. We took some cigarettes. Yeah. So, we have to get them. Oh, that's the guy there. A lot of police. Uh, I need to go for a grab. Uh, so, yeah. No, it's not. It's still, we had to come today. You're late here. She's the only one. Yeah, yeah. Yes, both of us. The worst of five times. So, we have this. 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 So, you got the agenda table? Yes. They're very, 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 very. They're in the same, uh, color. They're in the same, uh, color. So, possibly, she would, only the third week of the month that was showing. The calendar? Okay. Send it to her. Thank you. Sir Harry. Good. No. Yeah. These are the boxes. 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 Oh, I keep my own, so. I'm not a fan of your stuff. Yeah, but it's not really a big issue. Yeah, so it's not, uh, it's not there. It's a voice, right? What is that now? No, I don't like it. I don't like it. I just, uh, I'm real soon. Yeah. 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 Nice. Hi. Hi. Nice to see you. Hi. Hi. No, no, we've been arguing about what we're back. I mean, sure, sure, sure. From years ago. Just carries it. So, it was, yeah. Why? Um, I don't know. I'm watching personally. Yeah. 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 I don't know. I'm watching personally. Yeah. 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 I don't know. I'm watching personally. Yeah. 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 Ready to go? All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 3, 2019, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. And let the record reflect that all council members are present. And we are going to start off with an invocation. I hope Ms. Ayman Seema? From the Orange County Islamic Foundation Mission Viejo. No? Okay. Councilmember Robinson, would you do me the honor? Thank you.
Dear God, we just thank you for this, uh, this evening, this opportunity to do the people's business. I just ask that you bless each and every one of us with wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that are going to impact the residents of Lake Forest. I ask that, uh, you help bring civility and harmony, um, in the midst of vigorous debate. And I just ask that you, uh, help us all to focus on what it is that we're all here for. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Pledge from Mayor Protem Tazey.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no presentations this evening, so we are going to go to public comment. Um, if you'd like to participate, please fill out the blue speaker card, turn it in to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. When you are called to speak, you will see three lights at the podium, first being green. When you have 30 seconds left, the light will turn yellow, and when your time has expired, the light will turn red. At that time, your public comment period has ended, and the council requests that you conclude your comments. Madam Clerk, anybody from the public wish to address the council?
Yes, I've received several, um, public speaker cards. Brian Lockery, followed by Louise Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor Teddermer and Lake Forest City Council. My name's Brian Lockery, and I'm here tonight representing the transportation corridor agencies. Most people know them as the toll roads. These are publicly governed toll roads represented by city council members and county supervisors throughout Central and South Orange County. Your city is represented by council member voice on the TCA board. And I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about firsts. As you may know, Orange County was the first county in the state to, uh, to open toll roads, the first one to have FastTrak, which captured, um, uh, all tolls electronically. And now, we are the first in the state to offer what's called a sticker transponder. So, some folks may have gotten this postcard in the mail, and inside the postcard, they would have received a small sticker like this, and you will have one sticker for every vehicle that you have registered on a toll road account. So, this one has one sticker, but maybe you've got two or three or even four stickers for however many vehicles you have registered on your toll road account. And those stickers will go on either the inside of your windshield, on the lower right, uh, right side, on the passenger side, the lower left side, on the driver's side, or up near the rearview mirror. Um, and they are designed to replace this boxy, uh, plastic, hard-plastic transponder. So, it's a little sleeker, a little nicer, and, uh, the great part about it is it's, uh, immediately interoperable throughout the state. And eventually, the idea is these stickers will be interoperable throughout the nation as well. So, you'd be able to drive here in California, all the way out through the Texas toll roads to the Sunpass in Florida at some point in the future. Um, now, some common questions that we get that I just wanted to address real quickly. The stickers do not beep. So, the, the little stickers you put on there, they don't have batteries like these do. So, when you drive through the, uh, the toll transponder area, you won't hear the beep. They're still working. They will still work. Um, another question we get is, well, what if I go on the toll roads up in LA, the 110 or the 10 freeway, and I have three people in my car, and I want to switch this transponder to three? You can still do that. So, uh, we encourage people, if they plan on driving the LA toll roads and plan on car pulling and taking three, just keep this transponder, put it in a drawer. When you're going up to LA, you can pull it out, you can use it. While it will read both the sticker transponder and the hard case transponder, it will take the lower of the two tolls. So, it will take the hard case transponder toll. The technology allows it to do that. Um, so those are some of the, uh, the common questions that we do get. However, um, if you have any additional questions, um, you can certainly call us at 949-727-4800. Uh, or you can just go to the tollroads.com/sticker, and it's got a lot of great information on there that can answer probably most of your questions. We have a frequently asked questions page, and we even have some videos that show you how to put the sticker on. And as a reminder, that sticker, once you put it on, um, it needs to stay on for good on, on that area, because if you try and peel it off, it breaks the transmitter in it. So, you would need a new sticker. So, once it's stuck on, it's stuck on for good in that area. So, I appreciate your time, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Just for clarification, um, about the license plates, this, this is something that, um, encouraged to be put on all your vehicles, but license plates should be registered by, with TCA too, correct?
That's correct, yes. Uh, if for whatever reason you go through, uh, and you don't have the sticker transponder or the hard case transponder, but you're registered, your, your license plate will, uh, will register. And if you decide you don't want to use the hard case transponder anymore, we would ask you to take it to household hazardous waste, because it does have batteries in it, or you can remove the batteries and dispose of it, uh, that way, if you'd like, if you don't plan on using it. And if you don't like the sticker transponder, you prefer the hard case, you can use this, continue to use this up through 2024.
If you like the beeping.
If you like the beeping. If the beeping makes you comfortable, hang on to the hard case transponder.
Thank you, Mr. F. Bean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Louise Robertson, followed by Vincent Burke.
Good evening, Mayor Teddermer and council members. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm the president of Saddleback Valley PTA Council, and I represent 27 schools in the Saddleback Valley Unified School District. And I've come here today with a flyer to ask you to join a Lake Forest PTA. PTA is the oldest and the largest, uh, child advocacy organization in the United States. You don't need to be a parent or a teacher to join. Our local schools, as well as our state and national PTA, need support from everyone to improve the education, health, and safety of our students. This flyer has the names of all the schools, including the two PTOs. Um, and I have extras for those in the audience that would like one. I was just at National PTA, where we voted on resolutions for, um, lead poisoning, dangers of non-alcoholic and alcoholic energy drinks, and financial literacy for teens. There are many great things happening, and we could use everybody's support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Vincent Burke, followed by Ann Owens.
Good evening, Vincent Burke, Lake Forest. Um, for the past several weeks, there has been a project along Aliso Creek adjacent to Cherry Avenue, apparently some brush and tree removal. I don't know if council or staff can give me any information on this, but I was rather curious to, uh, get a feel for how extensive this brush removal project might be. The reason for this is I've taken walks along the creek there, and the amount of dead brush, dead trees that are standing, that are fallen, um, is, of course, a big source of, uh, fire load for that, that area. And as we all know, when the, the, uh, Santa Ana winds hit, come down from the, right along that channel, right along that creek, and could certainly carry fire quite, uh, long ways. But, uh, of more pressing concern to me is all this dead wood is just a wonderful breeding ground for termites. And we all know this is a problem of living near creeks. I, I've been along there, and just from the creek bed, I've grabbed hold of branches that are big as my arm, my forearm, and broken them with no trouble at all, and because of all the termite damage that is there. Well, termites damage those, take care of that tree, that's part of the natural ecosystem, but they also swarm. And guess what is lining the creek on either side of these roads? Okay, places like where I live, that we're undergoing a paint, a repainting project right now, and I am stunned at the amount of termite damage that I'm seeing, uh, following the pressure washing that occurs to the, the stucco and the wood trim. Um, just in my own patio, there's a six-foot swath along the, uh, my garage, uh, trim that is just all termites, termites, termites. Uh, the last time Viejo West was treated was back in around 2003. Probably it's about time to have it done again. But, thing is, Aliso Creek is just a, uh, a source, a massive source of termites for all the homes in the area and all the damage that done, that, uh, that can occur. The creek is, uh, Public Works, Department of Public Works, and I realize that's their concern, but it should hopefully be a concern to you folks, the amount of damage that is being done by the termites because of all the dead brush that, uh, they consume, they swarm from, and that represent a massive fire load in that area. Anyways, that's just my, just my thoughts.
Just a clarification, you're saying actually in the creek itself, in the, the...
Along the banks, yes.
Okay.
Along the, the, uh...
I guess it...
Pathway, you can see all the damage.
Yeah, I'm speculating it's in the flood control right of way, is my, okay, yeah. So, this is something that we can certainly bring that forward to the flood control folks, and, yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're on it. Thank you.
Vincent, we actually, uh, along El Toro Road above Chibuka, we actually, this last year, um, our city manager and Tom Wheeler drove along with me, and we saw a bunch of big, uh, dead oaks, so we removed them. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ann Owens, followed by Bob Holtclaw.
Hello, my name is Ann Owens, and I live in Lake Forest, and I'm a retired teacher from Serrano Intermediate School for over 20 years. I've come tonight to comment on two issues of concern to me, children and homelessness. Um, I attended a city council meeting several years ago when the Boys and Girls Club first presented their proposal to city council, uh, that you are considering tonight. Obviously, uh, in those years, nothing happened. As a teacher, I hope you realize the most important things to a child's development are consistency and feeling wanted and supported. I feel the Boys and Girls Club supplies these two things, and to ignore their willingness to bring their services to Lake Forest is not acceptable. I have heard excuses that the school district supplies these things, but to turn down any supplemental support for our youth is, I think, putting our heads in the sand, ignoring the problem that after-school care is a huge issue. Today, both parents, um, probably 95% have to work, uh, to support a family. The Boys and Girls Club is a much more than a daycare center. It supports homework and carries out a curriculum. It is a home away from home. I hope you will try and be progressive in your outreach to the community and to support their services. Secondly, um, I have spoken to several people, to Nikki, um, to Deborah Rose, and to Leah, who unfortunately is not here anymore, um, about the homeless issue in Lake Forest. Um, today, I had a tour, a two-hour conversation with a homeless lady who has lived in her car in Lake Forest for the past four years. Her big concern is she doesn't have a safe place to sleep, that is quiet, where she can feel safe and not be woken up by noise and people fighting, et cetera, every few hours. She's reached out, she told me, to the sheriff's department, um, to no avail, getting no answer about where an important place, or a safe place would be for her to sleep. Uh, she's a senior citizen, so she does not qualify for many of the, um, housing options that are available to people with families. Obviously, there is not enough affordable housing for the homeless, and, uh, I've called numerous agencies in Orange County on behalf of this lady, uh, who doesn't want to leave the community that spent her home for 30 years. I am supporting the, um, housing units, therefore, that have been proposed on Raymond Avenue, as I feel this is something that is desperately needed in our town. Um, thank you for listening, and hopefully you will make choices that will affect our community in a positive way.
Thank you very much.
May I just comment, Mr. Mayor? Ann, thank you for, for coming up here. Uh, did, did you get them into connection, this individual, with, um, Mercy House? We...
Yes.
They work, okay. It might, I don't know if...
Not that much here.
Not much, okay. I'll follow up with you later. Thank you.
Okay, Bob Holtclaw, resident of Lake Forest. At our last meeting, item 16 dealt with transitional housing, which is good, uh, in the right spot. I think, uh, the last meeting, it took about 30 minutes to decide if we had the responsibility, one, uh, on getting a, a loan for a loan building for 80 units near our post office in that area. Uh, no one brought up the, uh, that it's one of the heaviest traffic locations in Lake Forest now. Uh, did you know that 44,700 vehicles passed that location, uh, on El Toro Road in a 72-hour, uh, period? Where I got this information is, notice the logo, it's, uh, Lake Forest, and it's the, uh, average daily traffic volumes. Another spot might be Nakasi Nursery, uh, property. Uh, we know they, uh, were never going to build a school there. Uh, it was only a ploy by Toll Brothers to, uh, to get Foothill Ranch residents behind construction of 800 homes. Even Superintendent Turner of the Saddleback School District said that, uh, there will never be a school there because they don't have the money to build one. Uh, I read the contract in Nakasi property, and, uh, it won't be hard to change the contract, uh, for the 10 acres, uh, for, to transitional housing. One Saddleback School District, uh, has no longer a, a legal hold on the property. I'm sure it might, uh, go back to planning and, and go back to the city council meeting, but I'm sure our city attorney, uh, can write the proper wording to make a new contract for that area. After all, this is not the TCA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Heiko Peschel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow customers, so to speak. Heiko Peschel for Porel Avenue. Been here since about 1960, so I've been here, and I've seen more things than most of you. We used to go dove hunting just below here, uh, before there were lakes there. We'd just go over there, wide-open fields, uh, a few orange groves and not much else, and a pond with a whole bunch of doves. But that was circa 1970. Anyway, uh, more officially, update on speed limit signs. I'm wondering how the city is doing. I noticed, uh, I have a copy of the map that shows all the, uh, where all the speed limits are being changed, most of them upward, a couple of them downward. Wondering how that project is doing. Um, the removal of unnecessary left turn and traffic lights. There's one out at the end of Portola, and unless the TCA is nice enough to build Portola all the way to Irvine, uh, that traffic light is doing not much of anything out there. It has its own left turn light, which is doing even less than anything. I know, because we go out there, we ride our bikes, we travel out there, and I noticed that at the end of the street, uh, is all the parking for all the updating on the wireless stuff that's out there. Um, senior housing at Nakasi, it's been proposed at the intersection of Dimension and Bake, the furthest distance away from anything that those seniors could use, i.e. a shopping center, place to go, things like that. Why not put it in the, uh, cor, opposite end of Bake, where you were proposing a school, and, uh, put the, uh, school slash park or whatever, uh, but, uh, by Dimension, uh, where it would make much more sense? And last of all, I know it's an item on the agenda, more or less, but I do wish that the four of you would get together, find yourselves a good candidate to replace Leah. I would like to say much thanks to Leah Basil for all the work she's done in the time she's been here. She and I have not always agreed and not always been on the same side, but that's okay. She did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker, Mr. David Carter.
Good evening, Mayor Teddermer and members of the council. I'm Dave Carter, long-term, uh, resident of Lake Forest. I'm here just to apprise you of a couple of events that are coming up that you may not be aware of. Uh, October the 11th will be the fifth annual gala that my committee will do for the Boys and Girls Club fundraising. And that evening, last year, we were fortunate to raise a little over $40,000 for our Boys and Girls Club. The second one, you may not be, uh, aware of, the fact that we even have it going on in the city of Lake Forest. Subaru Share the Love is one of the major sponsors of the Boys and Girls Club, Lake Forest. Um, they'll be doing their annual, uh, Share the Love, which will start the first week in November and goes through January. And once again, this year, they have selected us as their hometown charity. So, uh, there is an opportunity there for us to be recognized on a national-type level, if we work our cards right. So, it's a, it's a pretty good thing that's going on with them, because they're one of the major supporters of the group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it? Let's try Facebook Live.
Yes, sir, we have two this evening. Randy Brinsner, comment to council, how can we get officers to help our crossguards and children at La Madera Elementary? There is a serious issue at the corner of Serrano and Ridge Route. It also seems like the lights change faster than previous years. Mark Hermanson, comment to council, we spend all this money on bike lanes, when will they start ticketing the Sunday group that spreads out across the bike lane in the entire first lane? It is, it is the cycle tour that comes up El Toro, the area near Stater Brothers.
That's it? Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council on things that are not on the agenda? Okay, I will close the public comment. on the agenda? Okay, I will close the public comment. That brings us to our consent calendar. There are four items on the consent calendar, and unless pulled by... There will be no separate discussion on these items unless pulled by members of the council, public or staff request specific items be removed for separate action. So, have there been requests to remove anything from consent? Okay, colleagues?
I just want to register an abstention on the minutes, since I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to... The warrant registry is considered part of the consent calendar, and in the warrant registry, there is a registered payment to the county of Orange. I am an employee of the county of Orange, but I do not work for the department that generated the warrants. Because the county of Orange is a public agency, because I do not work for that department that's in question, I have determined that I have noninterest and I will be voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a spiel, too. There is a warrant on the register to the gas company. I am an employee of the gas company and have determined that I have a remote interest in this warrant and will abstain from voting on that warrant.
All right, let's go three for three. There is an item on the warrant register to Irvine Ranch Water District. I am an employee of Irvine Ranch Water District but do not work for the department that generated this warrant. Because Irvine Ranch Water District is a public agency and because I do not work for the department in question, I have determined that I have a noninterest in this warrant and will vote on that matter. I think that takes care of all the...
And I'll make a motion that we move the warrant registry.
Second.
The consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Is that consistent with your second? Okay, so a motion to approve the consent calendar. Any more discussion? Can we go ahead and vote?
Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Great, thank you. And next, it brings us to discussion action items. We'll deal with item number five, options for filling former council member Basil's vacant seat. Turn it over to staff.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as you are all aware, at the August 20th council meeting, Leah Basil announced her resignation from the council effective August 31st. Government Code Section 36512 provides the manner and process for fulfilling a city council vacancy. State law also allows a city to adopt its own ordinance prescribing how a council vacancy should be filled. The city has not adopted such an ordinance, so we must follow the guidance in 36512. State law provides that once a vacancy occurs on the council, the council within 60 days must fill the vacancy by appointing a replacement or by calling a special election. That 60-day window, of course, began on August 31st. It ends on October 30th. That's your deadline for taking this action. Therefore, the council's options are to, one, appoint a new council member, or to call a special election to elect a new council member. That special election would take place on March 3rd, 2020. The registrar has estimated the cost of a special election to be between $134,000 and approximately $160,000. If the council chooses to appoint, instead of hold a special election, the process by which the appointment will be made is entirely up to the council. The only thing that you cannot do is appoint in closed session. Everything else is within your discretion. Thus, the actions for the council tonight are to, one, decide whether to fill the vacancy by appointment or special election, and, two, if the vacancy is filled by appointment, to decide on the appointment process. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Any... Well, I just want to make sure there's no quick questions from the legal council before we go to the public. Okay, seeing none. Public comments?
I have one speaker card from Henry Lieber.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I've lived in this city pretty much my entire life, which gains almost 50 years plus. About this, I'm not heavily involved in politics. This is the first time I've ever been to the city council, had to actually find it. That being said, after watching what's been going on in the city of Santa Ana for the last eight months, after one of their council members was removed for election fraud, I urge this council to actually go through with an appointment process as opposed to leaving that seat empty for eight months. There's approximately 18,000 people that live in that district right now that have no representative. That chair is empty. If you choose to have a special election, those people go without representation of their own for approximately eight months. The cost to run a special election while not exorbitant is high. We could use that money for other things. I'm looking at the four of you, and I think you're more than capable of appointing somebody to this council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. That's it for public comments. Try Facebook Live.
Yes, sir. We have three. Martin Henderson, comment to council, "To avoid the appearance of playing politics, something Councilman Robinson and Voits in the past have said the council shouldn't do, the city should hold a special election to replace Councilwoman Basile. A special election should, at the same time, be used to place before the voters an initiative to determine what is to be done with the Nakasi Nursery property, as well as any other matters worth considering, such as how to replace council members who don't fulfill their terms. If the residents aren't allowed to decide what they want for their city, whether it's Basile's replacement on the council or the use of Nakasi property, then what is the purpose of representative government? There is none. This is an opportunity for the council to rise above suspicion and do what's right for the people, particularly those who overwhelmingly elected Basile into office. Given that Robinson and Voits appeared on a campaign video paid for by Councilwoman Montezetti's election campaign, given that they were financial contributors to her campaign, and given that they were all advocates for Mayor Teddermer in his election campaign, it is imperative that the council avoid the appearance of collusion, cronyism, and/or political and ethical corruption. Basile won 38 of 39 precincts in 2016. She beat Robinson by nearly 4,000 votes, while he actively campaigned with Francisco Barajas to prevent her from holding any seat on the council. She should not be replaced by the opinions of four politicians who ideals were basically opposed to hers. She should be replaced by the people who elected her overwhelmingly. If not a special election, the second choice should be to enlist Basile as a consultant and accede to her preference for an appointed replacement. That is another means to exercise the will of the people who elected her overwhelmingly. And if you're not here to exercise the will of the people, particularly for the remainder of her term, enact in the best interest of 38 of 39 precincts citywide, then perhaps you should be resigning as well. An appointment of any other kind is pure politics." Sherry Anderson, comment to council, "Leah was the only council member elected with the majority of the residents. She is also the only council member trusted by many that voted for her. There is a mistrust in the city of council members that receive council campaign donations from city services, developers, builders, and political parties. Many of us now assume the remaining members of the council will replace her with their political allies who also support massive development of Lake Forest. I support a special election, given residents a chance to elect someone that represents their interests. It will build some trust of present members. I do not support Barajas, who lost his election and stated he didn't have time to attend Planning Commission meetings because of family responsibilities. I also do not support Fuentes. She stated at the council meeting, when appointed to the Planning Commission, that her job was to approve what the council wanted to develop." Doug Ward, comment to council, "Please do not cause the residents to incur additional costs by holding a special election. Enough money was wasted on the recall already. Respectfully."
And that's it? All right. Anybody else wish to address the council on this matter? Okay, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to my colleagues. If I could just add one thing, I'm not sure if this was stated, but somebody may wonder why it costs $150,000. Is it because it is a citywide, right, because her seat is the last of the citywide elections, and so this would be a citywide special election as compared to the districts we now see? So, that's why it is as much as it is, just for the benefit of the people here. All right, colleagues?
So, to staff, would we take applications, much like we do for our commissioners, and do the application come in and we'd be able to review?
That is one way the council could go. It's up to the council if you'd like to do that again.
So, let me just suggest to provide a little bit of method here, and that is we should first choose the method we want to deploy, and then we can talk about the details associated with that.
Well, I was just thinking if I want to go that direction, so...
Right. Well, we control the process as we do with the commission appointments, and we would have that same ability here. I think there was a, when Councilmember Bass came on board, he went through an appointment process, so... Okay.
I just think, you know, state law allows us to appoint or have a special election. Given that you and I are on a budget ad hoc committee, and we have a lot of insight into the future financially for Lake Forest, we are looking into a situation where our expenditures will exceed our revenue. So, we're going to be in a tight spot in three years. So, $130,000, $150,000, although it may not seem like a lot to some residents, it is a lot of money, and that could be used for services. That could be used for a lot of things that we have in the city that support families, individuals, et cetera. So, weighing those two options, for me, I think the most practical approach would be to appoint, and that would be my position on this matter.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion, but, you know, I still want to keep it up for discussion because I don't...
We can still discuss. Do we have a motion?
Just for clarification, I know it's in the staff report, but if you can just reiterate for the members of the public, whether we appoint or we hold a special election, since Councilwoman Basile was elected citywide, then any potential candidates could come from the entire city, not necessarily a district, since she wasn't officially representing a district. She and I are the last of the two. Can we limit where we pick as a group here tonight, or is that just something that if we decide to go down that road with an appointment or a special election, that we need to leave it open to everyone in the city?
Yes, good question. Because Leah was elected at large, the appointment or the election would be at large. That individual would hold office until 2020, at which point the seat would become a by-district seat. It would be somewhat difficult to not allow appointment to come from other districts, two through five. For example, if you individually wanted to only have appointees come from a certain district, you could do that, but to have that be a criteria or criterion would be difficult in light of state law.
Thank you. Appreciate the response.
Okay. Councilmember Voits, did you have anything else? Or... No? Okay. So, we have a motion. I will second the motion, which was to do it by an appointment process. Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, four to zero.
Okay, that's part one. I think the next part will be if there's any direction we would like to give staff as to process. I know there was a process I mentioned earlier, and it's my understanding that whatever direction we would give staff, they could bring this back at the next council meeting for us to officially approve whatever that methodology will be, or application, et cetera. So, colleagues, any input you want to provide now as to questionnaire, or whatever it might be, or if the staff have anything they'd like to share with us in terms of what's happened the last time, let's say?
During the last process, as Councilmember Voits mentioned, you did, the city council at that time took the existing commissioner application and added some questions to it and used that for potential city council appointees. And so, what we did tonight was we attached that application to your agenda materials, so you could see that for reference. So, the council could choose simply to use that same agenda template, I mean, application template, or you could choose to customize it. We would listen to your debate tonight, and we could come back with something that we think reflected what your direction was for you to approve during your next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I read through the potential application. I like it. I think it's very straightforward and asks some supplemental qualifying questions, and of course, the questions that they're supposed to ask. So, I'm okay with moving forward on an application, if not exactly like this, similar to this, and opening it to the public for appointment.
Okay. Colleagues, anything else? So, we can, what I'm hearing is we can take this template. Let's go ahead and bring that back, and then obviously, if we have any tweaks, we can make them at that time.
Right. What we could do is bring back this template, as well as the suggested timeframe for how long applicants would have to turn in their materials, what your review time would be, and what council meeting you would have your interviews, if you choose to do public interviews. So, we could bring all of that back in a subsequent item.
Okay. Do you need us to vote on any of that, or do you want, is there enough direction here? Okay. Councilmember, do you have anything else? Anything else you want for the process? Okay, we're good on that item. Thank you very much. Okay, brings us to the next discussion item, Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach proposal for a pop-up after-school enrichment program at El Toro Park.
Mayor and members of the council, we have a verbal presentation from our Director of Community Services, Scott Wasserman.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a, before you, is a PowerPoint presentation. I do apologize to the folks in the crowd that we had some technical difficulties and we weren't able to get that projected up on the TVs here, but I'm going to give that presentation anyway. This item has been agendized by the city council your last meeting of August 20th. You wanted to agendize it for this evening in order to potentially expedite a permit, and the Boys and Girls Club is proposing having a pop-up after-school program daily, Monday through Friday, during the school year from 2:45 to 5:00 p.m. in El Toro Park. The proposed program would serve up to 50 students, primarily from Gates Elementary, and it would use the picnic shelter, portable tables, chairs, and canopies to offer the program in the park. The Boys and Girls Club has a program fee of $25 per week per child. However, they do offer scholarships based on family income, and it's my understanding from the club that based on their past experience, they believe that many of the kids will qualify for low or no-cost matriculation in the program. The areas of the park that the club plans to use includes, I'm going to reference the corner of Merrillands and Los Alisos Boulevard. That's about where the sand volleyball courts lie. They're going to use that area, and they're proposing to use the area all the way up to the picnic shelter and also the restrooms. And of those areas, they would have exclusive use of the picnic shelter. They would have exclusive use of the open turf area where they set up the pop-ups. By pop-ups, we mean the canopies and also the tables and chairs. They would have non-exclusive use of the restrooms, which means simply the restrooms would remain available for the public. One of the things we've discussed before is that staff, we've not approved this type of use in the past, so we don't really have a process. So, what staff is proposing, if the city council wishes to proceed, would be a nonprofit park use pilot program type of permit. And it's very similar to the permitting process that we use for special events. We would create a permit process based on specific conditions of approval, and I think some of those are mentioned in your agenda report. And the Boys and Girls Club, a permit would be issued for the length of the school year, approximately nine months. It would make sense to have the duration of the permit correspond to the length of the school year, since it's an after-school program. Potential fees for the club, there are two ways, we believe, to do this, and it really just depends on how many people are enrolled in the program. For groups of 50 participants or fewer, so that would include the participants and the staff, groups of 50 or fewer, the city council could assess a fee to review the permit application, and in the last fee resolution, the city council approved a fee that was generated by our fee consultant. It's $176 per hour. It just depends on how long it takes staff to review the application and work through that process. In this scenario, the club would submit a $500 deposit, and then we would deduct against that $500 deposit for the time to process the application, and then the applicant would receive any funds that are left over. There's also a daily rental fee for the park, and in this scenario, for 50 participants or fewer, it would be $25 a day. or fewer, it would be $25 a day. This is the same fee that we use, this is the existing resident park rental fee for groups of 50 or fewer. So when residents call us and they say that they would like to rent a picnic shelter for eight hours, they're going to have some kind of a family event out there, if it's fewer than 50 participants, we charge them $25 a day and that's a fee that the city council could apply to this situation. If the program has more than 50 individuals out on the field, the second way to do this would be basically a different fee. The fee that the city has for groups of 50 or greater would be $90 per day. And of course, that, that would bring the potential fees up to just over $16,000. So that would be the same $500 deposit for the permit application and then the rental fee for the park, $90 per day times, I believe it's 180 days for nine months, that would be a little over $16,000. And again, this, the $90 is the same fee that we would charge a resident if someone called and wanted to reserve a picnic shelter for a family activity, perhaps a family reunion that would have more than 50 individuals. So potential fees, that, as I mentioned, the deposits and the fee options that I just presented reflect the city council adopted fee schedule. Alternatively, the city could prepare a fee study specifically for this type of park use by a nonprofit group. And in this case, staff would request 45 days to work with the fee consultant to prepare the fee study and this would ultimately require a resolution to update the fee schedule that the city council just approved in, I believe it was July. If the city council wishes to proceed, we could approve, the city council could approve a pilot program. We would work, essentially in this scenario, we'd work with the club. I would generally work with Pam Estes, the executive director, to issue the permit for the current school year. So I would work with Pam to get the application together, to discuss the conditions of approval and after that, we could return in six months with parameters for an ongoing program that would include a more formalized application process, operating policies and procedures, and a fee study for this type of park use. So just to sum up that slide, because I feel like I did a poor job explaining it, the pilot program is something that we would use to approve this permit request if council wishes to move in that direction. And following the pilot program, staff would return to the city council in about six months with a more formalized process, if the city council wishes to allow other nonprofit organizations to have a similar opportunity to offer services in city parks. This evening, we're requesting city council direction on a couple of items. The first is just the creation of a nonprofit park use pilot program to allow the club, the Boys and Girls Club, to operate in El Toro Park. We're also requesting direction on the $500 deposit and the fee of applying the fee of $176 an hour to review the application and also the fees to charge the club for the use of El Toro Park, we're seeking city council direction on the fees. And this concludes my presentation and I'll take any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions of staff before we go to the public?
Hi, Scott, I do have a question.
Sure.
Were these fees, so was Boys and, were Boys and Girls Club aware of these fees prior to the request of the pop-up? Or is this sort of a summary of information based on the, the last meeting that we kind of decided?
This is, I don't believe that they were aware of these specific fees. I think that what we indicated is that there would be different fee options for the city council to determine. Where we came up with these fees was, we looked at fees that are actually in the existing fee study.
Okay.
And then, of course, alternatively, you could direct staff to do, do a fee study to develop a fee specifically for this use, if you wish.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, AYSO and Lake Forest Little League are not-for-profits and how's that compare with the, the rates that we give to those? And does it have to be an exclusive for the whole park? Because you're basically taking El Toro Park, which is the only park in that region, off for other kids to come play after school. So that's a little bit troubling to me that they want exclusive from Merrillands all the way to the restrooms pop-up. So it, it just seems like for kids that aren't going to be in the program, for them to, where are they going to go play? So many questions were AYSO and Lake Forest Little League, which they, they have use of a field, whether it be a diamond or a soccer field, they have use of a part of a park. Here, we're asking for the whole park.
That's correct. So, let me, let me address the question about ASO and Little League first. The city council, actually before my time, I joined the city in 2015 and there's a different fee structure that exists for AYSO and Lake Forest Little League. And essentially, it's a per-participant flat fee that they pay at the beginning of the season. So for example, if, if AYSO has 2,000 kids that they're serving in a particular soccer season, let's say it's a spring soccer season, they would pay, I believe it's $5 per participant. In that scenario, they would pay $10,000 to the city and then rather than renting a specific number of hours or specific fields, we work with them to make sure that they have enough fields and facilities to conduct their season, but we save other fields for other purposes. Lake Forest Little League is very similar in that they have a large number, probably about 1,000 Lake Forest residents. So I suspect at the time, there was a city council that determined that they wanted to charge a fee to recapture some of the, the expenses related, related to allowing them to use our facilities, but also wanted to make it something that was easily affordable for the organizations. So I think that that's why ASO and Lake Forest Little League have lower fees like that. They have the flat fee, they serve 90% Lake Forest residents, that's also another factor. Your other question about the areas of the park, what I reported were actually, that was the site plan that was submitted by the Boys and Girls Club, were, those are the areas that they're requesting to use. So they did not request to use the playground or the exercise equipment or the tennis courts, but you are correct that they did ask to use essentially most of the area from the volleyball courts up to the picnic shelter and then, of course, to have access to the restroom. If, if council's uncomfortable with that, then you can certainly, you can condition approval on the use of certain sections of the park, if you wish to do that.
Exclusive use of any not-for-profit on any of my parks would be problematic to me to take a, a public park offline for any one club or any for one for nonprofit. So that's my concern here, that it's basically squared off and, and the, the whole park. So that is basically the whole park, all the grass areas.
See, for me, I don't see it as exclusive.
They're asking for exclusive.
Well, they're, they're, they're asking for significant area of the park, but I don't think that means an exclusive use.
Just that's for exclusively.
It's not, no, I think it's called a park use operating permit. It's, I don't think it says exclusive use.
So, it, it's a good question. So we, we consider this exclusive because if we're char, if the city council decides to charge a fee for the rental of the picnic shelter, then we would treat them like anyone else who pays that rental fee and they would get exclusive use of that picnic shelter. There are also some operational issues that I haven't had an opportunity to discuss with the club, but they likely need to keep their group together, they need to, you know, for safety reasons. And I, I don't know what the operational plan is to do that, if that would require them to have the area exclusively or if people can walk through their field of, of activity. We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
So basically, according to the outline here, exclusive use of the park, open turf for pop-ups and tables, non-exclusive use would be only the restrooms.
That's correct. The restrooms would remain open to the public.
So the rest of the park would have chain link fence around it?
No, we, we have not proposed that.
All right. I'm going to get the public's input at this point, if that's okay? So, public comment?
Pam Estes followed by John Irish.
First, I just wanted to clarify on the portion of the park. We actually just went out there on Thursday of last week and walked to the park and designated specifically, identified specifically where we would want to have our three kind of main areas of programming happening. And it really actually is only a small portion of the park. It's not for the whole park area and we would have it boundaries, you know, identified along that, excuse me. So it's, to me, it looks like maybe, maybe a quarter of, it's, we aren't, and we actually don't even need the gazebo air thing. We have our own EZ apps and stuff. So just to clarify, it's a smaller portion than your understanding.
Envisioning.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And the kids, you know, if you've ever been there at three o'clock after school, there's a lot of kids on that park that are kind of traversing from school to home and, and, there's not a lot of supervision there. And so this would provide adult, professional adult supervision onsite at that park. We wouldn't ignore other kids just because we're running a program. So that would be a benefit for sure. We've been working with these children and families specifically for over five years now and they are the families that are most in need in Lake Forest. And as I mentioned previously, this summer, we had for our El Toro Park program where we would pick kids up from there, bring them to our Laguna Canyon Club and then back at the end of the day, we had 107 children that we served. 90% of those kids were on full scholarship and that's based on the free and reduced lunch guidelines. So what we're asking, and I, I could get, go on forever and ever about, you know, our evidence-based approaches and what it really takes to make a difference in a child's life and, but I, I want to get down to the nitty-gritty of, of this pilot enrichment program and that reminding everyone that this is, you know, we are a community-based organization and we survive and are able to provide the quality services based on community support. And so what I would ask you to consider is waiving the fees for our organization. This is a benefit for the children and families that you all serve too, you know, I mean, they're calling us every day, asking us when they'll be able to participate. So, once again, just hoping you'll take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Irish followed by Danny Penduro.
John Irish, Lake Forest resident since 1976, member of the Kiwanis Club since 2006 and as you all know, the Kiwanis Club is a driving force behind this Boys and Girls Club initiative. So I had a few things I was going to talk about and then all of a sudden, wow, this curveball that we've been throwing is going to take a little bit of thinking. Right, right away, what I have in mind though is, back, back to my corporate days when we were designing different kinds of rocket and moon programs, we'd have little pilot programs going. We weren't really sure how it was going to work out, but we'd take a little program and try it out. And I was under the impression that was going on here is a one semester thing, like Pat's, Pam Estes says, we should maybe even consider no fee just as a, just to try this out. And there will probably be problems, but as we were always taught in management of corporations, that problems denote opportunities, all right? So this is a great opportunity to work out the kinks of whatever it is that we're thinking about and we'd like to just get on with that. Now, I say "we," I'm kind of a passive member of this, just, I haven't been very active, but I was. In 2015, I was, I had the honor of being a volunteer at the original, maybe one of the original pop-up programs for the Boys and Girls Club. It was at Olive Wood School back then. And the reason that we were able to use it at Olive Wood was because the principal was, supported the Boys and Girls concept. I always thought to myself, well, what happens when that principal goes away? And I got my basic thing, John, don't be so negative. Well, pretty soon, the principal went away. So now they're busing kids for the, this, these, this was the, the summer program, bussing them down to Laguna Beach. I just think, oh, I, in my, in my experience there in 2015, I was very, very impressed with the quality of what the staff from Boys and Girls Club was doing and they were, you know, expressing detailed things like, you should eat the right kind of food, do this, do that, do that. I remember one time, a brand-new kid came and brought his lunch bucket or his lunch bag, it consisted of a bag of potato chips. So he, he kind of got the message there. I think, I think I've said enough, but consider it a pilot program where we look for glitches, things that we haven't thought of and when we never, okay, bye-bye.
Danny Penduro followed by Hans Lorik.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Danny Penduro, Boys and Girls Club Laguna Beach Program Development Director. We are urging your consideration for the use of El Toro Park, not for the council's benefit, not for our club's benefit, but for the benefit of the children. Every day throughout summer, we bussed in a loaded bus full of Lake Forest residents to participate in our program at the Boys and Girls Club. They worked in education, in the arts, played sports and created lasting bonds with each other and with our staff members. I know that the Boys and Girls Club can provide a tremendous impact for your constituents because myself, I was a Boys and Girls Club member as a kid for the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach. I'm a testament of the positive impact that the Boys and Girls Club has. We urge you to please consider our program at this park, at El Toro Park, because the Boys and Girls Club can serve your residents with the utmost impact and positive fun, respect, kindness. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hans Lorik followed by Victor Scher.
Good evening, Hans Lorik, Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach. I just want to address you guys, but first of all, thank you for inviting us. But just to, just to make sure that you understand that we know how to do this, we know how to do this safely. We're professionals and we are, we're eager to, to do something like this. We are, we've been talking about it for many, many years and it's an opportunity that we, we really, you know, can't wait to serve. We have kids waiting for us and we're ready on, on, on the word. So you have my assurance that I'll be onsite, we've known this for a long time. It would be safe, it's going to be fun, it's going to be supplemental. I know the schools provide such a program, but we, another avenue, another outlet for all these kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victor Scher followed by David Carter.
How do you do? Victor Scher, 17-year resident. I typically don't address the council, but I feel very emotional about this particular topic. Years ago, when I took my undergraduate degree in recreation from Arizona State, I had the opportunity of becoming an intern with the Boys Club, as it was known during that era, and had personal hands-on experience in looking at the development of children through this program in conjunction with the City Parks and Recreation in Phoenix, Arizona. It adds a dimension to the programs and the community services and to the residents, another avenue of development. And the concepts have been proven over and over again and I'm hopeful that the city council will be favorably disposed in supporting this program for the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Carter followed by Andrea Alexander.
I will mirror members of the council, a little hesitant to come up after Victor and John were up here, but this is a process that's been going on for quite some time. But this is a process that's been going on for quite some time. Two years ago, in September, we started this process where we were asking to do a pre-application. I'm, I'm long-term. I've already got a building design and all of that that we turned in as part of that process. We went through everything that we possibly could, and we didn't have the means to get it back before council. One of the things we were waiting for was a community outreach. This is our community outreach. This is the test pilot program we wish to do in the area that we're talking about to engage these kids. This is an inclusive, not exclusive organization. If a kid is out there playing, he's going to be asked to join. He's going to be asked to participate. That's the difference between Boys and Girls Club and a soccer team, okay? This is the opportunity to engage these kids. I got them going down now on a weekly basis to Laguna Beach via bus, and I can't get them down there at 2:30 in the afternoon and back at 5:00. I don't want them riding the bus. But these kids now are engaged with kids in other communities, making lasting friends and learning life skills that we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Andrea Alexander, followed by Nikita Ganatra. Sorry.
Good evening. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I am absolutely in favor of the Boys and Girls Clubs and Club, and I think it's absolutely a perfect location near Gates Elementary School. And I do believe that the fees that you're, you're suggesting are rather high and that it, there should be a fee, but not that high. And as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a program at Serrano Intermediate School where you bussed kids to the Great Park. Is that correct? No?
To, to the sports park.
To the sports, to the sports park. That's what I meant, sorry. It's our Great Park, though, right? Anyway, and they paid a fee for the whole year? Is that correct? I can't remember. Was it like $50 a year for one student?
It was before the city council increased the fee.
Okay, well, I'm, yeah, I'm in favor of, of the club. I think it should have some fee, but not this high a fee, because I think if you have investment, if you put money out there, you're going to, you're going to work hard to keep your, your whatever viable, although I don't think that's a problem with the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nikita Ganatra.
Good evening, all. My name is Nikita Ganatra. I am a mom first. Secondary is the fact that I'm a business owner. I serve the kids of Lake Forest, Irvine, Alisa Viejo, and many other neighboring cities in my capacity as the Center Director of Kumon Math and Reading Center of Foothill Ranch. Tonight, I speak in front of you for, in support of Boys and Girls Club. For the last few months, I guess, it's been a little over a year or so that we've been working towards fundraising efforts. I serve on the committee that is putting together the annual gala that's coming up on October 11th. And tonight, I urge you to really take a moment to think about all of the kids that this club would be supporting in their development, not only for the academic help that they get after school, but really the social-emotional learning that our kids desperately need. The population that we'll be serving is coming from Gates Elementary. It is a high-need school. And if we are serving these, these students, we really want to take into account the fact that the long-term effect of our investment that we make currently is yet to be seen. But we know that studies and research points to the impact that such an after-school program has on these kids and eventually what a payout that is for our city. So we really want to take into consideration that. I also want to share with you that my son is here tonight. And he had spoken in front of you when he was just five years old in support of Boys and Girls Club, bringing this program to the city of Lake Forest. So I really greatly urge you again tonight to take a moment to think about the positive reinforcement that people like Danny, I believe he's still here, yep, Danny would have on these kids. The other piece of this is, I've had a chance to really see firsthand as a volunteer, not only in my capacity as someone who wants to work with the kids, but as I serve as a member of Seroptimus International, Lake Forest, Saddleback Valley Chapter, I've had a chance to really work with the kids, the girls specifically, in their Smart Girls Program, which coincided with the Dream It Be It Program for Seroptimus International. And when I got a chance to see, in just two sessions, the connections that we were able to make and the positive impact, the change in attitude, the way we were able to see the girls really mature right in front of us as they're discussing what are their actionable goals to improve their lives. Think about a dream and figure out a way to make it happen. So I really want to bring that to the forefront as well. And I thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last speaker card I have is Rita Bradley.
I'm just stymied. I thought this was a done deal the last time we talked about it. The Boys and Girls Club was coming. What happened? Don't you want to be a part of the future of our citizens of Lake Forest? How many times have we been told that the formidable years are this age group? I think each and every one of you needs to play a part in making this happen.
Thank you for your comments. Facebook Live.
No, sir.
All right, we will close the public comment. Colleagues. Please.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. You know, I like the idea of a pop-up pilot program. I don't think it's going to harm the use, the current use of the park. I would be really interested to know how many kids use it now that would be excluded from Boys and Girls Club. I would say, I would dare to say probably very few. I think it's a nice opportunity for us to see whether or not the Boys and Girls Club programming would work for the community. This has been a long road prior to even me coming on council, but I have read through all the documentation. There's quite a bit of it. And I don't think there's any harm in, in having Boys and Girls Club come and provide some sort of direction and development and programming for, for kids that really need it after school. I do have a couple concerns, mostly around safety. I know in public parks, you can't control, you know, who uses the restroom. So will these kids be accompanied by an adult to the restroom? As, as you know, I, you know, you just think about really bad worst-case scenarios, and you want to make sure that the kids are safe in your custody. The other thing is, you know, I noticed it was until 5:00 PM. You know, we're approaching fall and winter, and of course, the sun sets a lot sooner. So, you know, what do the kids do when sunset happens? Are they working in the dark? I had some of those logistical questions, which I think can be addressed. Regarding the fees, you know, I, I do think some of these fees might be a little exorbitant. I am interested in looking at maybe a flat fee structure like AYSO and Lake Forest Little League. They too serve majority of Lake Forest residents, as will Boys and Girls Club. So I feel like maybe that would be a, a nice, you know, sort of happy medium that maybe we can come to an agreement on. But that's sort of where I'm at right now on the pilot program. And I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
You know, I'm a supporter. I've been working with Boys and Girls Club Tustin, Boys and Girls Club Irvine, and actually was just inspection, did a tour of the new renovated Irvine Boys and Girls Club. I believe that they do wonderful work, but I think that we, we, a year and a half ago or a year ago, you guys came before us and we were willing to work with you, even though I was somewhat hesitant because it's a public park, but to give you guys the opportunity to, to come before us and, and bring your plans, show us your plans, show us your fundraising efforts. And did, did you guys ever submit that? Did staff ever get the proposal, the plans for the?
The short answer is that we, we did get something. We have actually attached documentation to the agenda report about what we got and staff's response to that. We've met with them subsequently to request additional information. We don't have enough yet to go out. What, what council directed us to do in 2016 was to go out and do public outreach. So the council never really directed that this is permanent facility will be built. It was just a direction to move forward with public outreach. We don't have enough information yet to go out and do the public outreach.
I guess this would be directed to Pam and staff. Do you have, because I take it that all four of the red areas that are here are, are areas that they've requested?
Yes.
Is there a way, because again, this is a Lake Forest part of the community, and that's the only park in that region. Is there a way that you can bring that together to where you're not taking all four of the sections that you're taking, which is basically the whole park?
Yeah, we definitely, that, that, after going there-
You've got a circle way down here. You've got squared all right around the bathrooms and that one green area where the kids play soccer, and then the volleyball courts are all red squared off.
We've changed, we'll change all of that. We'll, it'll be a much more confined area.
Because, and all of a sudden, you know, and I, I, you admirable work, and the, the kids that I see at Tustin and Irvine are happy, they're supervised, they're learning. I, I believe in what you're doing. It's just that fact is, this is a public park.
Right, and we will not be taking half the park even. It'll be more like a quarter of it. The one area, we, I, I can't really identify it on that map.
Right there, it goes the whole section of the park.
That's not-
That's a member of the voice. I think she's acknowledged that that, that's not an accurate representation of what they want to do going forward.
That's why, you know, when you come before us to see council, we represent the community.
Yeah.
So there's people that are senior citizens are going to walk, walk through there, and you're asking for exclusive use of the park. And so that's what, that's what it says, and so-
That's not what, well-
Okay, but that's what it says in the staff report, okay.
Yeah, gosh, where to even start?
All right.
Just to address really quickly, the prior, you know, our, our big dream would be to have a clubhouse on that park. We started the process. We completed the pre-application as requested. And after that, the next list of items that were being asked for, it would cost a considerable amount of money for us to go through with all the surveying and studies and all of that. So we have hesitation because we can't, if, if, if we can't even get permission to do an after-school outdoor program on that site, why would we invest donors' money into something that we didn't think was possible?
I understand that.
So, so that's, just to deal with that.
And you guys have a base of 107 kids that participated last summer with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have nothing further than, thank you. But you can't, the fact is, the way it's drawn out here, it's-
That's incorrect, that's incorrect, yeah. Yeah, and, and also just the safety component. We have sites on two public park sites in Laguna. We're experienced in managing that type of a program from the safety perspective. We have protocols, we have walkie-talkies, we never have a kid that's not in sight, even letting someone know they're going to another program area. The way that we want to structure the program is we have the children divided up by age group, and we have three program areas, and they'll be on a rotation basis. And there will be, the staff-to-child ratio at the max would be, we would have 12 kids to one staff. That would be maximum. We're going in there planning with seven staff to start out with, and that's for 50 kids. And then, and even with the restrooms, we've got protocol for all of that. We have public restrooms at the other sites, so we are equipped for that.
Thank you very much. Anything?
Sure. I feel thoroughly confused between the response from the audience and then the staff report. So, you know, I'm not exactly sure where to start, but I'm going to give it a shot. So in the staff report, there's significant mention about the picnic shelter. But it sounds to me, and I don't know who is the person who can speak most to this. I don't know if it's Pam or if it's Dave. But I want to hear from the person who is ultimately responsible here. And you mentioned that just be EZ UP, so you have no interest in using the picnic tables, gazebo, anything like that. You're going to use your own?
We will. We'll be using our own EZ UP. And I know because I've been on that park after school, and I've seen when some parents are waiting for their kids to get out of school, I've seen them sitting at that little gazebo area there. So we wouldn't want to infringe on that. Also, just getting out there and walking the site logistically and terrain-wise, we identified, we've become more defined in the areas that we want to do the programming, both in terms of levelness for tables and chairs, as well as safety and line of sight and making sure we don't have kids on the other side of the gully when we've got kids on, you know, the one side. So, so that, that part, yeah, that's, I hope that answered.
It does. I can appreciate that. So what I'm hearing is no use of the gazebos. Is that something that would impact the staff's comments too?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. This is something that we got from the club, where we asked them what parts of the park they would use. They submitted this. I understand that they've since, they've gone out there and reevaluated, and they have some different ideas about the areas that they-
Yeah, and, and that map is very difficult to really closely identify. So, so, yeah, that, that has changed since then.
Okay, so I can appreciate that, and I, you know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm just trying to figure out exactly what the request is, because it feels like I'm kind of hearing different information, you know, and I'm not exactly sure what, what the reason is for that. But, I mean, since time is of the essence with respect to the school year,
Right.
then I'm trying to narrow it down here rather than just saying, let's go talk more.
No, I totally appreciate.
I want to make sure we can give enough direction, if that's the will of the council tonight. So it, it kind of starts with that. I mean, we really have to narrow down specifically what we're talking about, what space. Because I do share the same perspective that some of my colleagues do, that, you know, one, I really like the organization.
Yeah.
But on, on the flip side, I want to make sure that the park is available to many, many people. Now, for instance, an EZ UP in one spot and then non-exclusive use of the park, that doesn't sound very, I don't know if it's the right word, but intimidating to me in any way. It seems very collegial. You know, just, but I don't know the square footage of the EZ UPS or anything like that. So right now, I'm just looking at the picture, and I share those same comments. It seems like it's not the whole park, but it's a lot of the usable space of the park in that photograph. So, and again, I know that that's not part of it.
Even the volleyball lots, we decided, after going there and looking at the terrain and seeing about, you know, from a safety perspective, we decided not to use those volleyball court areas. So even, you know, it's just one little, it's one quadrant, kind of. It's hard, it's hard with that map.
Okay, thank you very much. So the, the next area of discussion here, at least in my mind, has been with respect to the fees. So can the staff just kind of explain what our purpose is with the fees? I don't want, I don't want it to come across that, you know, we just charge fees because that's the way it works. I mean, what's the purpose of the fees and what would we use the funds for?
Thank you.
I know they're not specifically earmarked, but, you know, how do we generally try to reapply, you know, the, the revenue we generate from fees?
Sure. So the, the purpose of the fees is to offset the expense of allowing the activity. And we don't know exactly what that would be, because we've never done a fee study for this type of use precisely, for the use of ongoing programming in a park. We have, so what we tried to do was to give council some options on ways you could assess fees if you wish to do so. So we came up with four options to council. One of them that was, has already been mentioned was waive the fees. Another that was discussed was the ASO model, where there's a per-participant fee. That would be very inexpensive. The two that we provided in here use existing fees that we charge- we provided in here use existing fees that we charge residents when they rent the shelter area. Since they submitted the site plan, they've determined that they don't need to use the shelter area. So the council would need to decide how relevant that fee is. And then, the last, the last alternative would be the similar park rental fees. It was for the shelter, when we thought they were going to use the shelter. That would be for a group larger than 50. So we're applying the same, the same principles, the same standards that we would to individuals if they were to request to rent the shelter area.
Okay. So, generally, when I'm, when I'm looking at all of this, you know, I, what seems to be coming across, and again, it's the whole reason why we need a pilot program if we're going to move forward with this, is it sounds like the vast majority of the kids are particularly from that area. There is the potential that a significant portion of those kids actually go to the park every day already. I don't know for sure, but that's just kind of what I'm hearing. Now, I think the pilot program could potentially prove this out. If that's already occurring, then I'm already having a certain impact on the park that is just resident-driven, right? That's how I would view it. Okay? So, if bringing the program in provides additional impacts to the park, then those are fees that, sorry, those are, those are expenses that are, that are spread out over the community, right? It's taxpayer dollars that need to go repair, whatever it might be, you know, turf, any damage to a drinking fountain, anything like that, right? And so that's kind of what the fees would be used for. Again, I know we don't earmark them, but that's kind of how I view, that's the purpose of the fee, is to make sure that the park stays in good condition, for all to enjoy. Now, when I look at some of our sports models, and you and I have talked about revenue versus expenses, you know, we barely touch the actual expenses, right? We're just, it's, they're minute fees compared to the expenses, and so that means the taxpayers are paying huge amounts of money to try to maintain fields that, in many ways, are not available to the average resident significant portions of the year because they're under exclusive use. So this exclusive versus non-exclusive is a really, you know, important discussion here. And it seems like there's a lot of openness to allow anyone to participate. From a legal perspective, I don't know very much about that at all. It sounds like that's more the legal issues that they all, they would have to deal with, with their insurance company, because basically, we're just saying, look, we'll let you use the park, you indemnify us, and if you end up having some problems because you have someone who's not a member and something happens, and that's entirely on their organization. Is that fair characterization, or is there anything that you'd want to elaborate on there?
Yeah, that's, that's somewhat fair, councilmember. There, there's a body of law that deals with the use of public parkland in, in ways that are not consistent with, with the parkland itself. This, this appears to be a use that is consistent. There is a recreational element to this use. The cases and the AG opinions that look at these issues look at both the type of use and the exclusivity of that use. Anything that we can do, if the city goes forward with this, with the Boys and Girls Club, to ensure minimal exclusivity. So for example, they've talked about scholarships, meaning that anybody who wants to join would be welcome to join, ensures that we are as far from that, that, that legal cliff is, if you will, as possible. If there were a challenge, that challenge would actually come to the city of Lake Forest. Now, we would require, as a condition of approving anything with the Boys and Girls Club, full defense and indemnity and insurance by the Boys and Girls Club, so that we're not left holding the bag if there is a challenge based on their use of our park property.
Okay. And then, with respect to fees themselves, if we were to waive fees entirely, and it was zero, in some way, are we viewed as being a partner legally? Is there more value to charge a dollar? Is there more value to charge what we would consider to be fair market value, just from a legal perspective, or is it irrelevant?
Yeah, the waiver of fees would not come into play in terms of those, those types of issues. We could waive fees without incurring additional liability.
Okay, all right. You know, it's, in all of this, again, the parts that I've been confused about is just how much of the park would be used. I think that's a really important factor that, that needs to be dealt with. But I would be open to giving leeway to staff to negotiate that with the organization and trying to give some range. The next would be the exclusive versus non-exclusive parts to all of that. Because again, I mean, if we're talking about pop-ups that take up, call it 1,000 square feet, seems pretty small to me. If we're talking about using a significant portion of the park, it's a completely different conversation. So the pop-ups are kind of like the exclusive area. I don't think that they would want, like, a random stranger that's, you know, a 50-year-old male walking up to the pop-up and taking a seat. So it needs to be exclusive from that perspective. The exclusive versus the non-exclusive, you know, again, that's another conversation to be had. From what I'm hearing, and from what I believe is being said, is that if a kid wanted to participate, and for instance, they're out there playing soccer, they've got crafts, you know, arts and crafts going on, they'd be very open to that. If a 50-year-old male that looked a little sketchy wanted to sit down at that same table, I don't think they would have the same response. But from our perspective, there's a certain level of exclusivity, because it's not decided by age. It's, can any person sit down there? Is that a fair assessment? Okay. So there, so there is some exclusivity to it, but maybe not as much as all of us think that it's member-only. They just have a little more inclusiveness, but not 100%. And that's something that I'm okay with. I just don't know how exactly we, we get to all of that, just to make sure that we all feel comfortable moving forward. But those were just my few little challenges here, and I appreciate everybody's feedback. It, at least cleared it up a little bit in my head. I don't know if it did for anybody else, but did for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember White?
Is there a way that we could, much like we do Lake Forest Little League and AYSO, instead of charging them the rate that we charge for the rental of, for a party, that's what it seems like, you've done, taken kind of the rental space, because AYSO, Lake Forest Little League are considered not-for-profits, and this is not-for-profits. And I actually, I actually believe that it would be, bring some benefit to the community, because the fact is that, that have the kids, whether you guys are active there or not, the kids are coming. And so the fact is, they have adults that have experience in supervision of children, and maybe seeing what's going on in the park is eyes and boots on the ground, so to speak. So, I'd like to say that maybe, my suggestion would be to, the non-exclusive, not the whole park, which the map clearly states here, that was troublesome to me. So, I think that, obviously, the restroom, the play area's gotta be open. But if we could, if you could negotiate with them a portion of the park that's maybe where the proposed site was supposed to be, maybe that whole section in there, and then kind of more in the model of AYSO or Lake Forest Little League, negotiate that fee structure in the same model and mold of that. Because the fact is, we believe that kids playing soccer, just doing it is better than them sitting at home on their iPads. And the fact is, you guys being in the community and being at the park is actually enriching children's life. And so we all want our children to be better off. And, and, and you think you guys have, what I've seen, and what I've heard about Laguna Beach, and I've seen in Tustin and Irvine, I think that you guys do marvelous work. And so, I'd be open to re-coming back and allowing it to be more in the model of AYSO or Lake Forest Little League. But exclusivity of the whole park is troublesome to me. So if you guys could work on narrowing that scope down, I have nothing further.
Please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can certainly do that. It sounds like we can easily scale down which area of the park they would like to use. For the fee, we can also do that. This is really council discretion. So if you want to do the ASO model, if you're following the same model, if they have 50 kids, it would be $5 per participant. City council can decide if you want to assess the fee per trimester, right? In which case, it would be $250 per trimester, it would be $750. You can assess a portion of that, you can waive all of that. That's council's discretion.
You know, and knowing the location where the school is, Gates is on the border of Lake Forest Mission Vie Hill. So, Lake Forest Little League, AYSO, we give them a rate because of residency. I don't know if you guys will fall in that same category, but I'm willing to let that be worked out between you and, and staff. But I think that, the map that I'm seeing here, it was shocking to me, what was being asked for. So that's why my pushback was, you know, that's the whole part. So I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, let's, so, I think we have the nucleus of an opportunity here, and I want to try and seize on that. But I'm trying to give enough direction to where these folks know that it's gonna work or not work, because I, what I, I'm a little concerned, I hear, go back and work on more stuff and come back again. So I'm trying to see if there's something we can all sort of say, let's go forward. It is a pilot, so the intent is that we are not gonna have every answer tonight, at least that's my view of a pilot by design. But I think that there's enough opportunity there for us to give enough direction, so we can either vote it up or down tonight, and so everyone, they can, if it's going to be, they can move forward, and staff can work with them to bring, sort of tighten it up, and then we can get it updated in a month or two, just to sort of find out where it all landed. And again, it's a pilot. So, I, I'll make a motion, and this may not be complete, but I'll, that we pursue a nonprofit permit with them. I think we do need to have some nominal fee in there, because I, just for everyone's understanding, we set precedent, and that's the big difference between you, where you sit and where we sit, is that I know what you want, and I get it. The problem is, I have to assume there's 10 people just like you behind you who are gonna make the same ask, and we're gonna have to say yes to them too, to whatever we say yes to. So that's the burden we have up here. So that's why I'm not comfortable saying nothing. I would also, would support, though, that we do a fee study in parallel. So during the pilot program part, we can look at this and see if we can refine that and see what we learn, as long as they're open to recognizing, we don't know where it's gonna go, but we would still have some nominal fee for today, just to keep that, that dialogue going. So I'm not in favor of waiving the fees. I do think something is appropriate. I'm fine with something akin to what we do with the other groups as a, as a notion of something, and again, to do that. So, I'm in favor of the nonprofit permit. I think the locations can be resolved. It sounds like it's gonna be condensed. That's good. I appreciate the conversations about the exclusivity part, because that does concern me, but it sounds like it's a pilot. We'll find out what the impact is, and I'm hopeful we'll hear from the community. Maybe they just come back and say, we love it and that's great, or can we tweak this? We'll work on that too. So, I'm in favor of the program and giving the pilot approach.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a friendly amendment to your-
You may. Well, absolutely.
As I understand it, your motion is to go ahead and approve the nonprofit permit for Boys and Girls Club to operate in the park in El Toro. If I may make it more specific, to adopt the AYSO, you know, Lake Forest Little League model for fees, and I think per trimester is, is fair. That would be my amendment to your motion, if you're amenable to that.
I'm amenable to it. I guess I don't know exactly what that would be. Are we looking for a specific dollar amount tonight? Is that, do we think a requirement?
We'd have to bring back a resolution for fees. So we're looking for direction, and we bring something back with finding. I think so. What I'd need to know is, we're still talking about a nine-month pilot, correct?
Yes, yes. That's what, yes, this is a pilot. Okay. Does that answer all the questions that are on the table, or what's left?
No, I think that gives us direction.
And then I guess the question is, I'm sorry, did you want to?
I was gonna ask, it sounds like you did want us to conduct a fee study?
In parallel with, so we'll have a nominal fee to start-
Correct.
While in parallel, there would be a fee study, just to make sure we can see where that takes us. So yes, I would be in favor of that.
And to clarify, you do not want to charge a permit review fee, or the deposit to review their application?
I would, I do want to do that. Again, we have the same equity problem. If I waive it all over the place, then I'm gonna have the same problem. So I think it's a fairly nominal amount in this case, so I would say, I would prefer to keep it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was my understanding, too, that we keep that fee.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just to clarify, that's a deposit.
Yeah, I thought, of all the things we're discussing, that seems like it's a relatively minor issue. What other outstanding issues?
No, I think we have your direction. We're gonna work with the Boys and Girls Club to get them through the permitting process. So that would include getting their insurance, the indemnification we're looking for, clarifying the location, some of the operating hours, and the things that were listed in the staff report.
Okay.
And we took that from what we require for special event permits in parks. That's what that's based on. And then, so we wouldn't bring any of that back to you. We would just let you know offline that we were able to, to get to a permit. What we would bring back at our next council meeting would be a resolution that would allow charging the AYSO rate for that permit.
Okay, and does that stand in the way of them proceeding?
Well, they need a permit before they can start. So, as long as we get to a permit within a relatively quickly, you know, within the next week or so, they can start as soon as they have their permit. Really, for us, we'd want to have their proof of insurance.
Taking notes?
Mr. Mayor, council, if I may just chime in one additional item, this has been mentioned a few times, but just so that we're clear from, from council, as part of this process, working with Boys and Girls Club, you would like staff to ensure that the city has full protection legally.
Absolutely.
Not just insurance, but also defense, indemnity, et cetera, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, anything else, colleagues? We have a motion. Is that, we, we understand the motion? Is anybody having a question? Not that I could repeat it, but... Okay. I think we got, do we got a second? So we have a motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you for your patience and persistence. We're close to finishing here. City manager's report.
I have nothing further this evening.
Councilmember comments? We'll start over here. Councilmember Robinson?
Something that I've wanted to agendize for a while. I don't think I've done very many, so I'm sure I've got one, you know, okay. I'd like to discuss potentially naming one of the streets that are an entrance into the sports park. So there's one on Portola. I know there really isn't any sign structure there, but, so that's one location, or potentially the one off of Rancho Parkway. That one seems to be more of a main entrance for us, so I'm kind of leaning against that one. But maybe we can just agendize that particular discussion about naming one of those two, with my preference being one on Portola. So, and I'd ask for consensus, so that we could just have that discussion.
To explore naming them?
Yes. So there's one that doesn't have a street name at all. On, on Portola, there's, you just turn right into it, and there's no name there.
I'll support.
That's all I have. Hope you all have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Councilmember White?
I went to all, I went to too many concerts in the park this year because of my county employment. I was in Tustin, Irvine, Orange. But I gotta say, staff, you guys did a great job in the last concert of the park in Lake Forest. And so, again, what a great concert series. Thank you guys for what you do. And thank you, Boys and Girls Club. I'm excited for what you guys are gonna do for the kids of Lake Forest and enriching their lives. And so, and keeping eyes on our park. And so, thank you, and I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
I have no updates. I'm good, thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you very much. Good night.